Council boards and commission subcommittee meeting Tuesday, May 6th. It is approximately 12:41. Present are council members Weiner, Kilpatrick, Diller, and Smiley with us today. And my aide, Anthony DeFurie. We will open up with review of boards and commission vacancies and candidate resumes. Councilmember Diller, co-chair, do you have any conversation around vacancies and candidate resumes before we hear from Anthony?
No, I mean, one is a reappointment, one is an appointment. I think if we're satisfied with the reappointment, we move forward. And Mr. Matthews would be a nominee. And, you know, I think we would invite him to the next executive committee meeting.
And he is, Mr. Matthews, we're looking at him for what?
Financial advisory.
Financial advisory.
Both of them are.
Both of them are financial advisory vacancies?
Yes.
And they are our appointments, correct?
Yes.
Councilmember, do you have anything to add to that? Mr. Smiley?
Yeah, I would just say that financial advisory council is actually a council founding committee. And Mr. Oler has been an asset to it. He's one of the original members. He's been an asset to it. Unfortunately, we have a member, possibly another later on, who because of changes in their work and just basically everyday life schedules, that will be moving on. So, yeah, I believe Mr. Oler should remain as an asset. And I look forward to speaking with Mr. Matthews when he comes before council.
Thank you. Mr. Smiley, is he out of your district? What district are they from? Councilmatic district?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
I quite honestly.
One is 1-9-803.
That's three. Who's in three?
Probably Cartier.
That's probably up north. Sounds like it's up north.
Yeah, it is.
Quite honestly, I couldn't tell you because when we formed that group, when we put it together, number one, council districts were not and should remain a non-priority. It's the qualifications and the willingness to serve that we looked at. And quite honestly, as Councilman Weiner was here when we formed this committee, he can attest, there was a great deal of apprehension among some council members as to what the makeup of this would be. So, what if you sat back and watched to see how it would form? I believe it has the support of all of council now. But, no, I don't know whose district it is, but I've, from day one, when reappointments have started, we've all yielded whoever that council member is.
The reason I raise that, Councilmember Smiley, is because since we've resurrected this committee, if I'm right, all the appointees have had a council member sponsored from that specific district.
Yes, right, right.
For a process.
Yeah, yeah. And no objection. I'm not objecting to that at all.
Okay.
I'm just giving you some background from the beginning.
Yeah.
Well, they're both.
I don't leave anywhere out of my district, to be honest with you.
Okay.
They're both 1-9-803, so that's gotta be Cartier or Weiner, right?
Yeah, so I usually, I'll find out whose district it is, and then they'll typically sponsor it the rest of the way.
That's what partial views for.
Yeah.
Right. Because I noticed, I think, a couple of meetings ago, one of the appointees was from either Councilmember Bell or Powell's district, or maybe Kilpatrick. And it seemed to be a little surprise that that person was from that district. So, I want to make sure, you know, at least they have a councilmatic coverage in terms of sponsorship.
Right. Oh, I think the one that was from my district was the one that I did that was a reappointment.
A reappointment, correct?
Actually now lives in Councilman Weiner's district, but because he was my appointment from way back.
Okay.
I just did the reappointment.
Okay.
And that was the one where we did it wrong by resolution. Now go back in and change. So, for consistency, I think I talked to Anthony, and for consistency, I just did it all the, you know, three things.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kilpatrick. Co-chair, you have anything else to add on vacancies and candidate resumes?
I do not.
Anthony, do you have anything?
No. We only have, we don't have any vacancies. We have one expired on the audit, Debbie Horn. We're just waiting for her SFI, and then she'll come before council. There are vacancies on the board of assessment and the rental housing, but those are sort of in a situation right now where we're not appointing anyone to them.
I think the issue.
Councilmember.
With the rental housing is, you know, originally, well, about a year, maybe a little over a year ago, the idea had been floated to look at some of the housing boards and bring them together as one board because there were a number of vacancies. And I think with Ms. Hanson coming on board, we should reach out to her when she has a couple of weeks under the job and just say, "Do you have any ideas about that?" Because that's something we could certainly work on. You know, if we have a number of housing boards and we're not filling them all up, maybe a consolidation makes sense. But I think that might be something we want to give her some time to think about.
Right. We reached out to the previous GM right before he left, so it's gonna take a while. I guess we should give her a few weeks, but.
Yeah, give her a few weeks.
We'll talk to her.
More than before. I was thinking next Tuesday. Councilmember Kilpatrick.
When you say we have no vacancies, is that vacancies that we appoint or?
Yeah.
That we appoint.
That we appoint.
Yeah.
Okay, so I was gonna say, I don't.
Other than those two, board of assessment and rental housing.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comment on agenda item number two? Seeing the Councilmember Weiner?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and some comments. Do we have the resume for the candidate?
I sent them out. I have copies here if you want.
You may see.
Yeah.
They were sent electronically, I believe. You might find them out.
And the other one as well? Thanks.
Councilmember.
Yeah, I'd like to just take a moment to look at these.
Sure.
I apologize. With all the emails we get, it's easy to miss, and I have not seen this.
I just say, I believe it was. Mr. Smiley attached to the agenda. Now it came out.
Very likely.
That's normally what he does.
Are we on number two?
Yeah, we're on number two. We still.
Okay. I have some observations about the process, but I think it'd probably be better under number three.
All right. Yes.
We were supposed to do number three with Sam.
He was here.
Okay.
Mr. Guy, you working?
Is he in there?
You're on call. So, if there's no other discussion or questions on number two, agenda item number three, let's talk about the boards and commission process.
You're still, hmm? Am I slumming?
Yeah, yeah. It's not on camera.
What do you want me to say?
Wherever you're comfortable.
All right.
Wherever you're comfortable, Mr. Guy.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Guy. Come on in, sir. Good to see you.
Hello.
How are you?
All right, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Am I early?
Yes, we're early.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's all right. You're always welcome.
I appreciate that, thank you. Hey, Lou.
Councilmember Weiner, you wanted to talk about the boards and commission process.
Yes, Mr. President, and thank you for giving me the floor. I had sent some concerns around the council about a month ago, and with the idea that they would be discussed at this time. The impetus for restarting the boards and commissions meeting was to provide openness and transparency in the process. There was the perception that persons were being appointed to the boards, and that there was a life that took itself on when an appointment was made. And so, that by the time that person got to council, there was a sentiment, "Well, we see the person's qualified. There may not, there's no reason that he wouldn't be qualified, and it would be impolite not to approve the person." And that was not the issue. The issue always is, is to try to get an array of different people, to have council members have the opportunity to put forth people, and not one person alone should be wired in to perception of being wired in to control the process, or a few council members to be able to do that. And so, we instituted the boards and commissions process in order to create a sense of equality amongst all public, amongst all council members, that everyone would have equal opportunity to make a contribution to government with coming up with names. And there's been some ways I see that we can improve the boards and commissions process in order to accomplish that openness and transparency. And it deals with a number of issues. It deals with, and this list I had asked to be distributed, but I'll just, it's six different things. It deals with best practices, procedural and substantive law, process of soliciting boards and commission candidate from council members in the public, contents of email notice to council members, contents of the boards and commissions' agenda, and notice to the public and the council members. Now, I can combine them, and it essentially comes down to that the notice that we have on this agenda, for example, has called order, review of boards and commissions vacancies and candidate resumes, discussion regarding boards and commissions process, other, public comment, and adjournment. And this is what the public and council members get. What could be added into this agenda would be, for example, and we get this in advance as well as the public, would be a list of who are the candidates about to be considered at the boards and commissions? It, we're now being told, and what boards and commissions have openings, so that we're avoiding that perception that the process is still wired in to people who have the information available as to who has the openings and who's making the appointments. And having said that, it appears to me that both of these names, on a quick review of the resume, both Mark Euler and O.N.T. Matthews look to be outstanding. I don't know who O.N.T. Matthews is. I don't know if it's the gentleman in the room or not. Sir, are you O.N.T.?
No, that's Dr. Maurice Pritchett.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right. But I do notice that he's in my district, council district. And so, I would like to, as a matter of record, be the sponsor for that person, since he's my constituent. Having said that, that's simply a passing point. I would like to suggest that the agenda be added to, to enhance our openness and transparency by making it a practice that the boards and commissions that have vacancies be listed, the candidates who have been nominated by whomever be listed, other council members can see, and then they can say, "You know what? I may have somebody for that position as well that council should have an opportunity to consider." Because looking at this, we just don't know. And the process then also should indicate, when we get into an interview, and Council President, you've done this, each time we ask where your name came from, was it from a particular council person, was it a particular citizen, did they nominate themselves on their own? This, of course, you ask, as I do, for transparency and openness. Now, this may just seem like a small change, but I think it's an important change, and we can enhance our agenda by doing that.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Smiley?
Yeah, I got a couple of issues. Number one, I think we need to clear on posting the names on the agenda. Whether there's a way that can be done so is that we don't prohibit ourselves if we get another resume or something comes in, given our timeframe of meetings, to where if we get another one that comes in following the publication of an agenda, to where we can't address that individual. I think we need to have, we need to have some flexibility. We don't want to lock ourselves out because a resume shows up.
Yes.
You know, a little later, if I may.
Right.
Okay. So, that's number one I'd like to take a look at. Number two, what I want, I want to address this open transparency. I understand what's being said, but let's be clear. A lot of this discussion goes way back, and it doesn't go back to a lack of transparency. What it goes back to is a lack of council members willing to take the time to look at the documents that are available to them. All right? I was one of the ones that was accused of this previously. And all I did, because council had issues and concerns about vacancies, and it was a constant discussion, that I made it a point for me to research the website, contact administration, speak with our people, and go to the meetings to see where the vacancies were. All right? If a council member or any other one else is not going to do their own due diligence, redundancy is not going to help. We now have a website that has the vacancies, has the requirement, has everything that's there. I'm not saying you don't need to put it on an agenda, but at the same time, we're talking about putting all the vacancies on the agenda. We don't need a six-page agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. My contact.
Excuse, do I have the floor? I don't have the camera, but do I have the floor?
You still have the floor.
Okay.
I'd like a chance.
So, that's, you know, that's a concern. You know, we can put, you know, vacancies, you know, discussion of vacancies that exist, you know, which are posted on the website, we can put that address, so that would be out to the public, so they could look at that and remind them that they are there. But again, no amount of publication that we put forward is a substitute for an individual taking the initiative of doing their own homework.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Smiley?
Thank you very much. First, let me agree with Councilman Smiley on the things that you said. And I don't think that they're inconsistent in any way with what I've said. I think that council members have a duty to check the openings and, on their own, come up with qualified candidates. And I also agree when Councilman Smiley said that if names are already on the agenda, then it shouldn't preclude, it should be very clear, that other people can put names forward as well. So, I think that can be simply done by saying, "On May 6th, there'll be nominations considered for the assessment review board. There is one opening. So far, a name has been put forward by such and such, and there are opportunity for others to put names as well." Would, may I ask, Councilman Smiley, would you concur?
I have no problem with that, but I would definitely leave a review of the drafting to council, to council, just to be sure.
And I find myself, again, agreeing with Councilman Smiley.
So, we agree. Outstanding. Thank you, Councilmember Smiley. Thank you, Councilmember Weiner. Mr. Guy, would you like to add to the discussion, so you have the floor?
There's nothing for me to add to the discussion that I just listened to, because you guys were just talking about legislative business. There's a part that I'm here for, but it wasn't that part.
Well, you have the floor to discuss what you're here for, sir.
Right. I'm here for the place where the executive branch business and the legislative branch business intersect.
Sure.
And we make a particular point of staying out of what happens at the boards and commission meeting, because we understood this to be a forum that was created for the legislative branch to vet candidates and do whatever it decided that it wants to do. So, we tried not to have any involvement, try to interfere in any way. The two issues that I think prompted my invitation here was there were a series of resolutions that were passed that reflected a change. There was a phrase that was being added that said with the consent of the county executive that hadn't been inserted as, I guess, depends on how far back you go, but it was new with respect to recent times. And so, it was important to communicate that that shouldn't be there because consent hadn't taken place yet. And that's been all resolved. The last set of resolutions that have come through don't have that phrase in there anymore. And so, I think that issue's all taken care of. The second issue that also has been addressed was the issue of your signed resolutions. We understand that until there's actually a signed document by yourself or whoever it is that's presiding, council, the evidence of council's action doesn't really exist. And there's a multitude of court cases where courts have warned people about acting based on their ability to look into the crystal ball and predict, "Well, that's gonna pass or it's not gonna pass." This Supreme Court even says, "Don't waste your time trying to do that." So, we react and act on your written resolutions when there's a responsibility for us to act. And we used to download it from the internet, but the process of passing a resolution, getting it signed, getting it posted, would cause kind of a delay. So, I had spoken with some of the county council staff people, and we had worked out a system where once one was signed, they would include it with the ordinances, when they dropped off the ordinances to county exec. And so, that's the process that we use to receive notification. That's what they decided, agreed to do. And then we act from there. So, that second issue was resolved.
And I assume, Mr. Guy, you spoke with council, to council, and the council clerk?
The clerk.
Okay.
And Anthony, the primary two people with respect to the flow of the paperwork.
Right, okay. Yes, sorry, continue, please.
Okay. So, those were actually the major two items. Now, there was an additional item that I believed was valuable. I've been where the members of council are here. I've been a legislative branch elected official, so I have some degree of understanding. May not be perfect, but, and so that allows me in some instances to kind of have a sense of what might be able to be helpful. And I've had staff, and now I'm staff to an elected official. And a lot of stuff is worked out, staff member to staff member, and elected officials don't have to waste their time really being involved in a whole lot of issues that can be resolved. And so, what I found out was we live in a society where, for whatever reasons, a lot of people talk about people instead of talking to people. So, I reached a handout to the staff here, legislative staff, in an effort to kind of increase the interaction, if you will, staff to staff, because sometime there's issues related to boards and commissions, where if the staff person has an understanding of what's going on or who's doing what, they can better help their elected official. And likewise, if I have a better understanding of what's going on legislatively, I can better help the elected official that I work for. So, I had reached out, and it was my intention to either have a group meeting or small group meetings or individual meetings with the various staff people that represent county council members. And there was some, it seemed as if that was not desired to do that, but then on second thought, maybe it was desired to first come in here and have a conversation, and then maybe do that. I'm not sure what the pleasure is, and, but I think there's some value in that, because I've spent a lot of time having people tell me what somebody who was a person working over here said, when they could have just talked to me and probably got what they needed resolved. So, I was, the object was to try to open up greater levels of communication with the specific staff people at each county council person. Some of them I interact with, some I haven't had much interaction with, but I think some of them would find it helpful to have a better understanding of what we do in the executive office, because we have like a committee, boards and commissions committee of about five people, and they'd be able to better navigate the whole process.
I want to hear from council members, but let me make a statement on that point, that in the onset of this administration, one of the things that I said as president is that open communication would be advantageous for the executive branch and the legislative branch. Going forward, it is my desire that if there's an issue from you or someone in administration regarding legislative issue, that protocol is to speak with the president or the pro temp or respective council members before the administration speaks directly to our aides or staff members. I'm confident in saying that would probably be the position of all council members. I know, related to this issue, I did get that email from you. It was very extensive, very lawyer-like, and I appreciate it. In the future, as relates to boards and commissions, if there's a need to meet with our aides, staff, or what have you, just, you know, just send us a note to me, pro temp, or respective council members, so we'll be kept in the loop. And I do believe the preference of council members is that before the administration talks to our aide or staff person, with our respect and professional protocol, just let us know, and we can facilitate such a meeting. Second, I didn't know you have a committee on boards and commissions over there, which is a good thing. At some point, we all need to talk so this process continue to be open and fluid and productive for the government. So, going forward, for instance, Councilmember Diller and I, we talk about issues related to boards and commissions, and then our aides talk about it versus the aides talking about it coming to us. That's kind of how I like to do business around here. So, I would appreciate in the future that there would be a conversation with the president or pro temp or respective council members. And I think, being a former city councilman, you can respect that process, and I appreciate you sharing that with us and taking care of those other two outstanding issues. Councilmember Smiley, Councilmember Kilpatrick?
Yeah, I'd like to start at the back and go forward. Number one, I expect my aide, and I would speak to the staff, general attorney, wherever, I can't speak for everyone else, but to interact with the administration on the day-to-day operation of the governments, that happens, there's a phone call, we'll have, go and call back. I expect that to take place, keep things moving. However, as you said, and you know that's been my position, because we discussed this previously, if the administration has an issue of concern that they feel our staff should be involved in, yes, the president and pro temp should be notified. That should come, in my opinion, to an executive committee where council needs, and council should decide what staff would be involved in any subject meeting. The executive branch should not be summoning who they believe needs it. They can express where their concerns lie, but I think council as a body should decide which of our staff members, if any, should be involved to discuss a specific issue. For instance, if there was an issue with council's website and our postings and all, my legislative aide puts the legislation on. I would expect that she would be a part of that, boards and commissions. So, I just say, I agree with what you're saying. That's the path. I thought we were following this, and we should follow. I'm somewhat taken aback by number two, in that I'll go out on a limb and say, well, I would say, as the only council member that I'm aware of to ever have a council president attempt to keep a piece of their legislation from going into effect by not signing it, and that was for over a year, I'm surprised that.
Present company excluded.
Before you got here.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna say it was, but before you got here and after Paul Clark.
Yeah.
So, be that as it may, all right? It was publicized, so it's not a big secret, but my mind is, I don't understand how anything... That's not a big secret, but my mind is, I don't understand how anything, resolution or otherwise, would be acting on without the appropriate signatures to begin with. So, I'm just kind of curious as to what triggered that? What was being acted on without, by the administration without signature? Well, that, that precipitated this because I, this is the first I've heard of it. So, I'm, I'm just curious as to a little bite of history if I can.
Mr. Guy?
Sir, I'd be glad to respond to, to that question. We're in complete agreement with the conclusion that he reached, that no one should be acting without the proper documents being signed. And so, what precipitated that whole conversation was somebody actually suggested to us that we could just go ahead and act because we know that people are gonna get voted in and the paperwork's gonna be processed. And so, in response to somebody saying that to us, we really had made it crystal clear that we're, we are not doing that. We are not jumping out in front of the legislative branch. When you guys sign the paperwork and give it to us, it's official and then you've kind of passed the football over for the next step. So, until we have that paperwork, we, we don't act. So, there's really not a disagreement with respect to what was stated. Somebody just suggested that. Thank you, Mr. Guy.
And I appreciate the clarif- clarification because the initial presentation led me to believe that that had taken place and that's what was being done. So, I, I, yeah, I, I appreciate that clarification. And because as far as I know, signed resolutions and everything would always go over with the packet with the ordinances and everything else. So, which is, you know, may or may not, but as, as it should be, let's say, best suggestion, you know, I, I agree. I just tell me, let me tell you, for path forward, as someone who walked out of this room to go to the council chamber and a reporter told me about a piece of my legislation, you must feel good, it's gonna pass nine to four, and it went down nine to four. You don't do anything without the vote and the signature.
That's right.
But thank you for clearing that up. I feel better.
Thank you.
We, we are, you know, you, you said that you wanted to have this conversation at this table. And some things we work out without the elected officials getting involved.
Sure.
So, like, we, we worked out the process of sending over a signed resolution with the ordinances. That was worked out with staff to staff. So, that's an example of what I say where, you know, Tom Gordon and thirteen members of council don't need to waste their time for us to figure out how to make sure that the, the document moves so everybody can act on it. Um, like I said, you, we can download that if it's signed and it's on your website. We could download it and we used to be able to, to download it. It would just cause a delay. If you all would like to, we, we'd be willing to receive a digital copy as soon as it's signed and that would allow us to move forward faster with our step. But for now, what we've worked out is we get one, we get an actual piece of paper. But the digital one might make things move faster because we now have evidence that it's signed. And it hasn't, it wasn't past practice since I've been involved for us to receive a signed resolution with the ordinances because the code only requires presentment of ordinances. The code doesn't require presentment of reso- resolutions. So, we've worked that out. But if you want to send it to us digitally as soon as they're available, that just lets us get started maybe a week earlier.
We'll, we'll have a conversation with, uh, Beth on that. Uh, I do have, thank you, do have a couple more comments from council members, Kilpatrick. And Wyner, thank you, Mr. Guy.
Thank you. Just a question, um, for Mr. Guy that, is there a timeframe? I mean, understanding that, that appointments come through in four different ways, either from the council without having to have the consent of the administration, from council with the consent, from the coun- from the administration with our consent or from the administration without our consent. When we send names over, is there a timeframe that we should expect to hear back? For instance, I, I have one, actually, I've had four recently. But one, a woman asked if she could be back on the historic review board. I sent her name over. I believe in that case, it's an administration's, um, appointment. So, should I expect to hear back from the administration within a certain timeframe that they are interested or that they absolutely are not interested? Um, I mean, these aren't people that I solicited, you know, they, they came to me. I have Drac that is supposed to have nine members. We're now down to two members, they don't even have a quorum because they submitted names to me, I submitted names to the administration. And up until this week, where I just got two back, this has been going on since before the first of the year. This has been since November or December. We've been trying to get some clarification as to whether they're going to have the ability to have these two members or if they need to start going out and looking for more. So, I'm, I'm kind of interested in a protocol that says, within thirty days, sixty days, whatever it is, that we, as the person who has submitted a name, hears back that, yes, we're accepting that or no, I'm sorry, we've already found somebody and we, we don't need that name. And, you know, for most of these things, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other. But I just think as a courtesy that we need to hear back so that we can tell the people that came to us. I mean, we're, we keep saying we're looking for volunteers and we're asking people to volunteer. And if we're going to do that, then I think that we owe them a response within a timely manner rather than them emailing me every two weeks to say, have you heard anything, have you heard anything? Because I don't want to sound like I'm throwing the administration under the bus, but essentially, I am when I'm saying, no, I haven't heard anything back from them. We'll check again, we'll check again, we'll check again. And I, I don't think that's fair to either side.
Thank you, councilman. Mr. Guy?
Yes. I guess there's one, one thing that I, I need to say. And that is, we do everything in our power. And, and maybe we're not perfect at this. But we do everything in our power not to ask county council to put in people in this, in the positions that belong in the county council. So, unless something has happened that I'm not aware of, we, we don't come to county council and say, you guys have an appointment and we want you to put Johnny Smith in that spot. We don't, we don't, we don't do that. With respect to rushing county council and trying to say, hey, you, you have a spot open, hurry up and fill it. We do not, we respect your, your right to proceed as you believe is appropriate as the legislative branch. So, we don't make, we don't try to interfere and make that call. And I'm not saying that it's a hundred percent, but ninety-nine percent. And I've heard, none of you have ever heard, no, there's nobody on county council that has had me approach them on behalf of the administration saying, put this person in your position. So, that, that kind of partly responds to some of what was asked. The rest of it, she would probably have to talk to the county exec because that, just as it's the legislative prerogative as to their timetable for moving, I would, I'm, I'm not in a position to usurp his authority and, and say, he's gonna do something in a certain number of days, et cetera. Um, I, I, just as I'm respecting your, your, your rights, I certainly have to respect his because I'm a person who's here on behalf of him.
Thank you. Councilmember Kilpatrick, you want, you want to follow up?
I do. So, so am I to understand that, that if somebody comes to a council person and says, I'm interested in such and such a board and it's one that is the administration's to name, that we should not even be passing names over to the administration to say, hey, this person approached me and they're interested?
I did not say that.
But that was...
One of my...
That was kind of my question because, like I said, the historic review board, I think, is the administration's to name. So, I passed over a name saying, this person has said that they're interested. Now, I, again, it does not matter to me whether they get on or whether they don't get on. I was just going through the process, I was contacted. I sent it over to the administration saying, in case you need it, here's a name of somebody. I mean, I think that my point was, if we're gonna have communication, how long should it take before we hear back? That, or, or should we expect, should we say to the constituent, I'm turning the name over? They will contact you directly? I mean, I, I just want a protocol.
Do you have, Mr. Guy, is it thirty days, ten weeks, ten days?
Right.
I mean, just give us a...
It's, you...
How do you normally work?
Yeah, you would have, you, if you're trying to, see, once you, we never ask you for a timetable. And I, I would suggest that when it comes to a timetable, that's, that's the prerogative of the county exec. And what I would also say is that the su- suggestion with respect to making recommendations, that's one of many sources. We get, just like you do, you get people recommended to you from various sources. And it's, every board and commission process isn't the same. Sometime, you have due diligence, that's important. Some of these rep- some of these boards and commissions exercise very important powers. There's concerns about having a broad range of people reflected throughout the entire community. So, there's a lot of issues involved. So, nothing is on a timetable. It never has been, never has been a, a direct timetable. And so, when people submit information, the executive basically has an opportunity to review it, look at other people, solicit additional information. So, that's why I would not be a person who would just say, in X number of days, a decision's going to be made. And we've never asked that of council.
But we'll, we'll come back to that. Uh, councilmember Wyner, uh, Diller, then my aide wants to say something before they speak. I do think there's value in revisiting that, uh, at a committee level because to have people either from our recommendation or your recommendation hanging in limbo to the decision that's made, particularly if they're volunteers, uh, I don't think it's a good thing. So, I think if we can establish a protocol, forty-five days, sixty days, two weeks, whatever. But I think we need to, I think we can find a happy medium there. And that's just to put in your spirit and in your, 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 your thinking. So, we'll revisit that.
Well, you don't, some, sometimes what happens is, when you put a timetable, then you require, you make yourself tell people no that may get a yes or may get to do something else. So, if you start saying, okay, within twenty days, if you say you want to be on a board or commission, we'll tell you yes or no. Now, you've told people no and...
We'll, we'll...
It may not be what you want to do.
We'll, we'll talk about that offline. But I think we're, we're saying the same thing, which is I think we need to uh, look at it a little more seriously at some point. Uh, we do have another meeting in five minutes. I want to hear from councilmember Wyner, co-chair Diller, and Anthony, my aide.
Thank you. I, I have three matters that I want to bring up. And the first one is, your comment was very good when you said communications coming from the executive branch to our branch through a protocol would go through the president, pro temp, the president of council, and the council members. There are different kinds of communications. The one that, uh, this executive assistant, uh, Sam Guy had communicated, uh, to the aides as well as to all of us, dealt with a tool, a, a digital tool for the members of council staff, uh, like an instant messaging. It's not the sort of thing that I think for the efficiency of government should tie up a whole council meeting. It's the kind of thing that there should be some discretion to email all of members of county council and say, if you think your staff member would benefit by having this additional digital tool, you know, please let your aide know that you can contact me directly. And I'm also mindful of the fact that both branches of government have urged each branch to work, work closely together. And it's consistent with that. So, uh, I just want to distinguish between the point that councilman Smiley made and a different kind of circumstance when it deals with a tool that an aide might use like instant messaging.
Thank you.
That's the first of three points. Uh, the second point was, um, uh, because we didn't have, um, boards and commissions' names and vacancies listed on the, on the, um, agenda. But we're, we're all in agreement that we should do that going forward. I'm not sure whether or not, uh, one reappointment was discussed. It was the reappointment of, um, a member to the ethics commission, Mr. Simon. And one of the reasons why we want to have a boards and commissions member is that we want to be able to say, uh, someone like him, well, he's served, but I have someone else. And we don't want to necessarily do that when Mr. Simon is, is here or, or we want to be able to say, I know he's a reappointment, but I would like him to come in for an interview because I've got some questions about him. And you and I had a chance to talk about this beforehand. So, I, again, I don't know if Mr. Simon was discussed at the one of the four meetings that we've had.
He was.
Okay. So, but I didn't know that because I had to miss it due to some family issues and his name wasn't on the agenda. So, again, I'm pleased that we're moving forward with adding the boards and members' names, um, to the contents of emails and notices that will go to the public and the council members. The third thing I want to talk about is, uh, work that I've done through, um, your subcommittee, boards and, and commissions. And I've discussed it as well with, uh, the people who have attended the, um, the electronic digital committee, the technology, technology committee. And that is that we'd like to see all of the annual reports electronically posted. But it's really gonna be your agenda on the executive committee or maybe this agenda to say, all are the reports issued. They might be issued and they might be somewhere, but there's a deadline, um, of sometime in April. And I gave you a spreadsheet that we'd shown at boards and commissions and a lot of them are not available. So, it's a collaborative thing, there's not a, uh, there is no issues with the administration because they're still sorting out who is responsible in any particular arena for doing the report. And then, uh, we're then, the secondary thing that I'm working on on behalf of council is where are they gonna be posted so that councilman Smiley or councilman Retta or I can, or any of the aides can go and say, let's take a look at this report. It, it's just not available right now. Those are the three things I wanted to discuss.
Thank you, councilmember Wyner. Joining us is colleague, councilmember Retta, uh, councilmember Smiley.
Two quick points. One, when council agreed to establish the process that we weren't going to requ- require all reappointments to come before council, the other part of that was, and remains to this day, any council member can request any candidate to appear before council, whether it are a reappointment or appointment. That was, that was part of what council agreed to because we weren't having everyone come automatically. And we said, you know, there's really not. But if any council member, if there's a reappointment and a council member wants them to come back before council, so be it. That's, that's all right. And all I had to do is notify the council president that I want this person to come for an interview again. And then also, you're absolutely right. Just because someone is on a board doesn't mean they have that seat. There may be someone else. Part of my problem with our boards and commissions, well, probably after the first year because it took me that long to get a handle on them, is that we technically, other than not voting them back in, have no way of removing them. And, and so, that's another thing.
And just a follow-up point on that, again, I...
Are you done, Mr. Smiley? I just, one, one quick thing.
Let's run another time.
Yes, Guy, and that is, after all of that talk back and forth about time limits and all, I think all Ms. Kilpatrick and, and any of us are asking for is, if someone comes to us about some, about an appointment, and I think the executive branch and us should be working together to fill spots to at least make, let, pass along names. be working together to fill spots to at least make, let, pass along names, it's not that they're getting it or they're not getting it. A simple, we've received your communication and we will be in, we will be in touch with the individual. Just acknowledge that you, I think that's all anybody wants. Just acknowledge that you got it. Not telling you to put them in, not telling you not to, send me over here. If there's a, if there's a, a board or commission position that's out of my district and someone happens to see the county executive or Mr. Guy or somewhere and express an interest, I would hope they'll pass that name to me, not tell them, well, you got to get a hold of councilman Smiley. Because I believe in one-stop shopping. You tell one person in county government, that person has the responsibility to get it to the individual and keep the ball rolling. That's all. I think that's all we're looking for.
Right, I agree with that. Thank you, council member.
Yes, very briefly in, in response to that, again, I concur with councilman Smiley and just to remind, uh, that when these names will be on here and the commissions will be on here, if councilman Smiley or, or councilwoman Diller or councilreta, I have a concern, we're not bringing up at the last minute when that person is already scheduled. That's why we have this vetting, this pre-vetting boards and commissions meeting so that we can say, we're not particularly, uh, you know, I, or anyone else might say, you know, I, I want to consider a different route on this.
Great. Council member Diller, you still have your question or comment?
I'm ready for special service.
Thank you. Anthony, you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to say for the, for the DRAC appointments, those, I believe it says in the code that those are supposed to be recommended by the local council member then given to you and for you to make the appointment. So for those, I, I think we should be able to get some sort of response.
For, for DRAC appointments, that is part of the process. I believe the councilwoman has two people who are in the process of finishing up their SFIs. And as part of what I tried to set up, that's a little different process, the DRAC process, than some of the other ones. And so my, again, my goal and objective was to make sure that staff people, because those are district staff people for the, for the DRAC committees, is the district council people who make the recommendations for the most part. And their staff person is a person who I would expect to potentially have some interaction with unless the council person themselves decide they want to be involved in interaction. Very few council people actually directly have any interaction with me about DRACs. Very few do. I won't say none, but very few do. And so part of the, the goal and objective in talking to the staff people was to help get, help them get a better understanding as to how we do things so that they know who to talk to in communicating and keeping updated. And that, that still hasn't taken place, but it could be valuable.
Down the road.
It could be, I mean, that was my object in, in reaching out. We accept applications from anywhere and everywhere, but we, we don't tell every person no. We don't have a rule if we're not going to say yes, tell them no in twenty days. Because there's just no sense in just telling the folks no, 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 when it may not be a no.
Well.
So we have to figure out where the balance is.
Sure, we'll have further conversation. I want to thank you for coming in today and sharing your expertise representing the administration is always a very fine job. Anything else under other? Mr. Smiley?
Just quickly, there are only a very few council members that have DRAC committees. So that's why you only interact with a few because the rest of us don't have them.
Thank you.
And I take a hand off.
Thank you. Any, anything from the public?
Most new chair. Oh, we don't need one.
We don't need one, thank you.